All right, I have 7:45. I'm going to call the joint meeting on Tuesday, May 9th to order. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, item number one is the approval of the minutes of the regular joint meeting on April 11th, 2023.
Second.
Second for Cheryl. Anybody have any comments, questions, additions or changes? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number two is the consent calendar. It is A through G. Does anybody wish to pull anything off the consent calendar? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Abstain.
Second.
And John, did you, did somebody say something? Somebody have an abstention to this or no? We're good?
Nope.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of the consent calendar?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, number three is to make an additional appropriation of $750,000 within the Community Development Block Grant Fund for a revolving loan program. I did get a request. Jackie, you can raise your hand there to show that you're hearing before the meeting. Jackie unfortunately has laryngitis, so she's having a hard time communicating. So she sent me a question upfront. She really wanted to know what the revolving loan program consisted of. And this is coming through ECD and what we are moving towards. It has not been fully solidified yet, but we have, we're taking the $750,000 and putting it into a program where we're going to go to outside vendors and offer low interest loans to businesses. And instead of just having all grant programs, which in most cases are matching grant programs, we're going to offer people these low interest loans with the ability to pay those loans off early and also forgive a certain amount of that loan. Right now, we're looking at literally 50% forgiveness. What this does is many businesses are unable to garner loans because they're brand new. They're entrepreneurial, they don't have credit yet. So this will be a dual win for the, for both the entrepreneur and for potentially the banks. So banks go get some working relationship with the entrepreneurs. Hopefully they'll be able to get real loans in the future. And Jackie, I'd say the way it benefits the city is we currently operate with many loan programs. As an example, we have a downtown grant program where we will give people up to $60,000, but they have to match that with $60,000. When we invest that money, we get nothing back. In this case, we might do forgivable loans up to $100,000. And at the end of a term, if they pay back early and on time, we may actually get $50,000 of that back to reinvest in another business. There is one other relatively local town, Plainville, it is a local town, that has a program like this, but this is a little bit more innovative and the state has offered some of these things. So the money is there so that we can move forward and solidify the program, but we have not done that yet. So the, the, all the terms of the program are still working. Jackie with a thumbs up as that answer your question. Oh, you could, you could, yeah, there you go. That's good. She's, she's using her little symbols down there. All right, does anybody have any questions on that? I don't think we had a motion, correct? Can I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, one last chance for questions or comments. Yeah?
Cambridge ran a revolving loan for a few years, started by Park Farms and Lawrence and a couple brother banks. It was very successful though. This should be no different, actually, to be more successful, I think.
Yep. Been in many conversations, obviously Justin, who does a great job with ECD, but I go on a lot of these meetings with prospective new business owners or people within town already. And we are hearing, just initially, this is why it's brought up, is that would be a better option for most of them. So appreciate that comment. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Number four, I'm going to read it on here because it's a little bigger. Hang on one second. We are going to approve a resolution appropriating $5.2 million for the upgrade of the water SCADA system and...
Second.
Great. I see Rob here. Rob, would you like to talk about this one a little bit? That's, it's a big number, so I think we might get some questions.
Good evening, can you hear me? I'm losing my voice too, so it must be something with Jackie. Rob Longo, Bristol Water and Sewer. So this project is a state low interest loan, revolving loan program for our SCADA system, which is basically our controls of all our water systems. It hasn't been updated since. The last upgrade was 2006, and that was just a computer aspect of it. This is a full blown, all our wellfields, all our tanks, our filter plant, everything on the water side runs off of these computers. So all the technology, even being from 2006, even the hardware is outdated. So we went out and we acquired and got approval from the Commissioner of DPH for, was originally going to be $4 million. With COVID and three years of process and all the technology with it has grown to 5.2. The Water Department will be repaying the debt. This is not on the taxpayers, this is on the water users. It'll come out of rates at the closing of the loan, which will probably be about two and a half years from now on completion of the project. Then we'll anticipate of putting that into our rate base at that point. So it'll basically control every aspect of our water system as well as give us security that we do not currently have. We don't have any remote control over our system because of the security aspect and the risk of somebody intruding into it and causing problems with our water system. It's also going to push us hopefully to one of my goals in the next three years, which is to eliminate second and third shifts at our plant. We currently run 24/7, second and third shift staffed by one employee by themselves. This will hopefully be able to take it to a remote control status. Many water plants and systems across the country are doing that. We're actually one of the last ones in the state. But it'll actually allow us not to have someone sitting there for eight hours on second and third shift. In a vulnerable situation, God forbid, anything ever happened to them, no one's there. So this will give us remote control of that. We'll have more operators on our first shift. So we've been working on the project for a couple of years now and finally are ready to, to, to sign the contract to move forward, pending your approval.
Great, thanks. Any questions for Rob before we do the motion? Anything from Zoom? Nope, looks good.
Thank you.
All right, so we need a motion. Can we have a motion to waive the reading?
The resolution out loud. And then we need a roll call vote.
Okay. So I'll let you read the resolution then, and then we'll do...
This is a resolution appropriating $5,200,000 for the upgrade of the Water Department SCADA system. Be it resolved, A, that pursuant to Section 25 of the City Charter, the Board of Finance of the City of Bristol hereby determines that it is necessary to upgrade the City of Bristol Water Department's existing supervisory control and data acquisition SCADA system. The upgrade will provide for better control of the water system and consist of varying degrees of electrical instrumentation and controls upgrades, hardware and radio replacements associated with the SCADA system at the Bristol Water Treatment Plant and various remote stations. B, that the sum of $5,200,000 is appropriated therefore. C, the $5,200,000 appropriation may be spent for acquisition and installation costs, equipment, consultant fees, net interest on borrowings and other financing costs and other expenses related to the project. The appropriation is subject to the approval by a joint meeting of the City Council and Board of Finance. The $5,200,000 appropriation shall be funded from borrowing less any grants received to defray the appropriation. And you can go ahead with...
So I think I need a motion to approve the resolution as read.
Second.
I guess I can make the motion, that's fine. So this is a roll call vote?
Yes, it is. All right, Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Heiser?
Yes.
Councilman Howe?
Yes.
Commissioner Kazamikas? Sorry about your name.
Yes.
Think you got it.
That's what.
Commissioner Mace?
Yes.
Commissioner Mikowski?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Councilwoman Olson? Thumbs up?
Jackie, show us a thumb. Yeah, she's good. Yeah, she's, she's finding all the little...
Councilman Panayotto?
Yes.
Councilman Rosengren?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tebault?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Tyler?
Yes.
And Commissioner Whitford?
He's not on anymore.
He's not on anymore?
No, he dropped. And then the mayor votes yes as well.
And mayor, thank you.
How could you forget?
Can't see this reading.
That's all right, no problem. Okay. Nobody opposed, that motion carries. I think for the next agenda item, we can entertain a motion to waive the reading of the bond issuance.
Second.
There you go, we've already done it, so that's good. And now entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Move it.
Second.
And this is also a roll call vote, so I'll ask you to read the roll.
Commissioner Burns?
Aye.
Commissioner Heiser?
Yes.
Councilman Howe?
Yes.
Commissioner Kazamikas?
Yes.
Commissioner Mace?
Yes.
Commissioner Mikowski?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien? Councilwoman Olson?
You got a thumbs up?
It's looking like we're okay.
Yep.
Councilman Panayotto?
Yes.
Councilman Rosengren?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tebault?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tyler?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes on this one too?
And the mayor votes yes.
All right, we will move on to number six, which is to transfer $35,000 within the capital nonrecurring fund for cemetery repairs. Somebody want to read that motion? Or just make the motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Sebastian, you want to mention this one real quick? I think we talked about this one, but...
We did, yeah. This is for repairs to the eagle at the top of the, the Civil War monument in West Cemetery, which has been a longstanding monument there with longstanding need for repairs. We don't want the eagle to literally fall apart, so we are looking for this, funding for repairs. There is another twin monument to this monument east Hartford that both monuments were designed by the, the founder of the Travelers Insurance Company. So we have the inclination that with this start, we may pursue a partnership with Travelers to remedy the entirety of the monument at some time in the near or intermediate future so that we have a, a real prized monument there in the cemetery. But the, the members, I give them a lot of credit of the Cemetery Commission, they work very hard on this for some time now, so we're, we're happy to get this done now. The, the repairs will take a while, from what we understand. It's a very old monument and the eagle is a delicate process to take on and off, but we're happy to, to see this move forward. So thank you to the mayor too for supporting the project.
It's been going on for a while, and I, the other reason I wanted you to talk about it a little bit more is to remind people to go check it out at the West Cemetery, highest point of the West Cemetery. I don't think a lot of people know that we have this gym in town, so great. Any other comments or questions?
At the Board of Finance meeting, Councilman, there were some questions, liability questions concerning the work being done by the restorer. And also, I remember Commissioner Heiser, you had a question.
Yeah, well, it was about, on the contractual side, because looking at the information that was provided, while we're all in agreement with that, we were asking if legal counsel to the city had reviewed this and, you know, by this meeting, hopefully, is to maybe insert any reps and warrants with respect to this, just to protect the city for work performed, you know, in a normal course of a contract that's totaling $35,000.
They haven't had a chance to look at it, so... Yeah, didn't come through. I, I think we could take a recommend, well, we have a, a motion on the floor.
Yeah, I think it, you know, the motion being, you know, approved with the appropriate language, as deemed appropriate by legal counsel maybe?
So you'd like to make that amendment?
Just to protect the interests of the city.
Yeah. So you're going to add the amendment that it's subject to review by legal counsel?
Right.
Okay, can I have a second for that?
Second.
Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, and now we'll go back and approve it as amended, kind of a motion to... John?
And just a comment, because there are two local firms that have volunteered to take the eagle off the top?
Yep.
And to transport it to where it's going at no cost.
Yeah, that's another very good thing. So if I have kept track of this well, we do, we just need one more motion to prove it as amended, if I'm not mistaken.
So moved.
Sebastian, second by Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, number seven. Jackie, were you on for enough of the previous meeting to hear the explanation on number seven that we approved at a special, at the special meeting before? Are you good with that? If not, we'll have Ray get up and explain it real quick again before we get to seven. Nope, all right, so Ray, quick explanation to come on up, so I'll read it as he comes up. This is to make an additional appropriation for $507,063 within the capital funds project for Public Works, and this is the Mellon Street Bridge. It's a little confusing, so go ahead, Ray.
Yes, I apologize for the confusion. Last month I went before the Board of Finance and advised them of a change that the DOT has made in the federal bridge program. Previously to the change, the state, through the federal funds, paid 80% and the city paid 20%. But they revised the program, so currently the state federal bridge program pays 100% of construction cost, which means no, you know, city share. I came before the board and a, we requested an increased appropriation, once again covered by, you know, state, you know, grant funding, that's 100% you know, correct here tonight because two reasons. There was confusion between Public Works and Comptrollers. I'll take responsibility that when I said I didn't need 400,000 for bond money, I meant I didn't need the money bonded, I still need the money in a pot. The pot of money comes from, you know, the federal bridge, you know, program. So this appropriation puts back the 400,000. And then it also, we, the city has to enter into an agreement with the state, it's called a PALS agreement, and the state has a slightly different increase, you know, contingency than what we were carrying, which brings the total to the amount 5,007.
Great. Jackie, I hope that's helpful and 100% covered is what I hope you heard. All right, did we do a motion for this? I forgot, I don't think I did when it's coming up. No, I need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Jackie's good, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Motion carries, thanks Ray.
Yep, thank you.
We're going to move on to number eight, which is a monthly revenue and expense report by Diane.
Good evening, everyone. I will keep this short, I don't have a lot to really report to on tonight. Covered a lot with during the budget process over the last couple of weeks. And as you know, we will be, or you will be voting on the budget next Monday, so that will be the final adoption. And if there are any questions up to that before Monday, just feel free to email myself, anybody on my staff will be able to help you. You do have the revenue and expense report in front of you. I will say, tax revenues are coming in as expected, comparable to the same time last year, no concerns there. The prior year tax revenue and the interest and lien fees are a little bit behind where they were last year at this point in time, but we still are over what we had estimated during our budget. And this is all good news because I do have another number I tallied, I'll, I'll give you at the end. The motor vehicle supplement collections right now were at 1.8 million. I had estimated based on prior year collection rate that we would bring in about $2 million based on what was billed. We're a little behind that at this point, but I still anticipate that will, will be about $300,000 over what we had anticipated during the budget process. So still all relatively good news. I think the motor vehicle supplement, it is a motor vehicle tax and it does come in at a lower collection rate than the real estate and personal property. So again, no concerns, but probably may not reach the $2 million that I had anticipated originally. Building permit revenue, as you can see, is coming in very strong, we're 126% over, and conveyance fees 186% over, and investment earnings are 268% over budget. So that's coming in very well, and we did actually increase investment earning revenue in next year's budget. I did know before that we did receive 1.2 million in municipal revenue sharing grants that was a surprise, I think, to many other communities as well, that that came in this year. But I also did note that we also did receive finally 238,000 in FEMA reimbursement. So that is additional money, funds that were expended during COVID that are coming in, and I think some of it might also have been for the storm that we had that summer as well. All that being said, I just took a quick look at the revenues themselves and just on what's coming in over what was anticipated, we're at about $3 million right now. So I think that puts us in a really good position for fiscal year end when we go to close everything out and start allocating money to the equipment building sinking fund and some of the other reserves at the end of the year. One other thing that still is, I don't have an exact number on, but I think the Board of Ed is anticipating that the excess cost grant reimbursement will be higher than what it has been in the past, so that we do anticipate there will be additional funds there over what was anticipated. So I just thought I would report on that. On the expenditure side, the only thing that we're really watching at this point, we had a very mild winter, as you know, so we did not spend a lot of those funds. We are watching the motor vehicle, the motor fuels, and as I note, we're running about 142,000 over same time last year, but we did account for some sort of an increase and we do have money set aside in a commodities account to help with that towards the end of the year. ARPA, that's been going well, and I think all of those funds will be obligated by December of 2024, few projects that are still pending. And then the 2023, I mentioned the budget, you will be voting on next Monday. So if there are any specific questions, I'm here to answer them.
We'll start with the room first. Anybody have any questions for Diane or comments? How about on Zoom? Nope.
Great, thank you.
Thank you Diane. All right, is there any other business that come before us at the joint board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, sorry.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. We will give a four minute turnover, 7:10, we'll start. All right, I'd like to call the May 9th City Council meeting to order, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in the heart, equal and civil, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so tonight for our opening ceremonies, it's my pleasure to introduce a young citizen who is the Citizen of the Year from the Bristol Boys and Girls Club, Youth of the Year, sorry about that, and where did my paperwork go on it? Well, I'll do what I remember, and Duane will fill in the other aspects if I miss them. But Duane is a junior at Central High School. He lives in Cambridge Park and has been part of the Bristol Boys and Girls Club since he's been six years old, if I read that correctly. He has learned many skills throughout his time with the Bristol Boys and Girls Club, and he has big shoes to fill because we have had Youth of the Year two years in a row from Bristol in the past, so we have lots of expectations of Duane Vargas. And he did want to get up and say a couple of words, so I'm going to introduce Duane to come up and say a few words.
Hey, I'm on tech, they'll get it on, yep. Hello, that's good. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to throw in a correction. I do, I do attend Bristol Eastern High School.
Oh, essential, so the, the paper got that wrong.
Yeah, it did.
My bad. And by the way, that's better for me, Duane, I'm a Bristol Eastern High School grad, so...
The answer's all the way. Thank you. I don't really got much to say, he said it all for me. I would just like some luck. Tomorrow I'll be competing for Connecticut Youth of the Year, and, you know, I think I got it, so, thank you.
Oops, I have a Bristol All Heart pin, and I also have a little memorial key to the city. It's not really the key to the city, but when you go on to Connecticut and the Nationals, I want you to take that with you. Congratulations. Alrighty, we'll move on to our regular agenda, the first item being the approval of the minutes from the City Council meeting on April 11th.
Move approval.
Second.
Got that. Any additions, corrections, or changes from anybody? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number three is public participation. We have a couple of people that have signed up, so we'll start in the room here first, and then if people are on Zoom, I'll, I'll call you out in a second. Steve Cohen, you're up first. Steve, you know the drill, name and address for the record.
Steve Cohen, 331 Main Street. Good evening. I've come to ask something of the council tonight, and I don't expect you to take a vote on it tonight, but I would ask that you take a vote on it next month. Crime has ticked up in Bristol of late, I don't think that's any secret. And to be fair, it's ticked up in a lot of places. We had a homicide in Terryville last week of all places. A few months ago, there was a homicide on Queen Street in Southington. But crime has ticked up in Bristol. And, you know, the police can only do so much because the police, let's be honest, they're addressing symptoms. And I've lived on Main Street for 28 years, and I've worked very closely with two administrations on housing, because if you look where the problems lie, where the root cause of the problems are, it's in the housing. And I think we need to have a committee that will talk about these problems, because if we're not going to talk about them, they're never going to get any better. And we can pretend they don't exist like the last administration did, or we can address them. And I think there should be a committee of maybe three that could discuss these things, look at problem areas, offer suggestions, talk about it. If we don't talk about it, it's never going to get any better. So like I said, I'm not asking for an answer tonight, but I'd like to come back next month, and I think I have some support for this. The mayor and I, in the interest of full disclosure, the mayor and I met about this. I know he's not in favor of this, but that's okay. Mayor and I agree on a lot of things, most things. But we don't agree on this, but that's okay. That's okay.
Steve, I appreciate that you have been to the point as well too, so...
Yes.
Just to give the rest of the council, what would you call this committee and kind of, what is their...
I don't know what I would, I don't know what I would call it, and I'm not even exactly sure what it would do, but I, I think, and I've given this a lot of thought, I really have, and I probably, when you and I met, I, I probably didn't get my point across too well because I like visiting with you and I like talking about Bristol, I really do. But I think that we need to look at some of these areas, folks. We need to, you know, I worked with Mayor Nacastro very closely. We made some tremendous impact in some of these neighborhoods, on Federal Hill and other parts of the city too, where they're building the new parking garage behind assigned City Hall, there were three really bad, I'm sure the chief might remember those buildings. There was three really bad buildings standing there. They're not there anymore. Crime went down right away when those buildings went away, you know? So, and not the demolition is always the answer, it isn't. You know, we had a building up on Spring Street that used to be 12 efficiencies, and Mayor Nacastro wanted to tear it down, and I said, no, let's, let's save this one. And it's four townhouses now, and it's restored, it's an 1880 building, it's one of the Joel Case buildings. But you know, I'm fourth generation here, and I get very emotional when I think about Bristol. My relatives, they're all buried here. My parents' house, my grandparents' house, my great grandparents' house, they're all standing here, you know? I don't want to see what happened, what's, what's happening in Bristol, I don't want to see it continue. I don't want to see Bristol turn into some of the cities that we've seen have gone off the deep end. I really don't, I, I can't. I can't do it, folks. I can't, so...
I appreciate that.
I think we just, I, I don't think it's too much to ask, I really don't, and I think that if we at least talk about it, maybe we'll find some solutions. I think we will, we've got... I think we will, we've got a lot of smart people in this town, and like I said, I've been doing this a long, long time. I didn't, I never planned on doing this when I moved to Main Street, but then I realized what a shambles it was, so somebody had to do something. So I did, and I've been doing this ever since, 28 years now. But that's all. So like I said, I'll reach out to all of the council members individually before the next council meeting, and probably get my point across a little bit better, but that's all.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
You are welcome as well to set up another appointment in my office, I enjoyed our conversation.
I did, too.
I will say this publicly, and your three minutes is up, so just let me.
I know.
Say one thing.
I have three minutes.
Is I encourage you to get involved with code enforcement first Wednesday of every month, I think that's a lot of the heart of what you're talking about. If you have police issues, we do have a police commission, and you have a very, very open and receptive police chief right behind you as well, too.
Yes, I know.
And, and I, I do encourage you to reach out to all the individuals up here, we're all ready to listen.
And I appreciate, I just want to say one quick thing, you know, I wanted to come six months ago and talk about this, but out of respect for what happened in October, and I just, I want you to understand that, I, I didn't feel right about it.
Thank you very much. All right, next on my list is John Lotovico. And just name and address for the record, John, if you would.
Good evening, John Lotovico, 47 Talion Street. I'm here this evening, and thank you for having me speak tonight. I'm here this evening just as a question for the realignment of Route 72 in front of St. I'm sorry, let me back up. I'm, I'm a trustee of St. Anthony, of St. Francis Sales, which consists of St. Anne's and St. Anthony's Church. Father Schultz wanted to be here tonight, unfortunately he had a previous appointment. I know Judge Duval, I've already spoken to Ray Rogazinski, and I just wanted to reinforce what Father Schultz is concerned. Questions, questions are. Is that unfortunately, we are, you know, we're still baptizing, we still have weddings, and we still have confirmations and communions, Catholic Church, but we awful, we also have an awful lot of funeral, funerals. And that's our main way up and our main way down. So would, whatever construction is going to happen, it needs to happen, and I'm glad this is happening, I don't know how much of an impact it's going to be in the front of St. Anthony's Church during the Monday, Friday type things, even Saturdays, when funerals are going, are going on. So that's the only reason why I just wanted to say, you know, the concern, the questions, I know Ray has been working very closely with this project, and I just was actually speaking to Ray, and I know he mentioned something to you already.
Yep.
Unbeknownst to me, so I don't want to take up too much time.
No, that's fine.
I'm a fast talker, I don't need three minutes, and I'm done.
Very good, thank you, John.
Okay.
I will add to you that we are going to pull this up on the agenda, but we do have the Connecticut DOT here that is not only working on that project, but what they're going to present to us today are some future opportunities to realign Route 72. So we can bring up those questions at the end, we will definitely do that for you. We did also have a West End Committee meeting last Saturday where we talked about some of this, and Ray has been a great resource.
I'm, Ray's unbelievable.
As much as, I just want to say this thing, one thing that's very clear for everybody, as much as we think we can tell you exactly what's going to happen, is a pretty fluid situation, there may be opportunities that you have to close the street for the day unexpectedly because a gas line needs to be moved or something like that. But for the most part, right now, I think you're pretty good, but I do think you're going to want to listen to the presentation from the Connecticut DOT.
Understanding how to, as I was on zoning for 24 and a half years, I understand how projects go, I just had a voice, my concern for Father Phil, he would have been here instead of me. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it very much. All right, no other people listed here, so I'll go to Zoom next. Does anybody on Zoom wish to address the council? Hearing none, I'll make one last call in the room here. All right, hearing none, we will move on to.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to move Item 11, Presentation by CT DOT of a Proposed Realignment of CT Route 72 in the area of Bracket Park, up to the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? A motion carries. Ray, you wanted to do a quick introduction, and then I think you guys have a presentation that you'll be able to share, are we good with that, Marina? Good, go ahead, Ray.
Yes, thanks for moving it up on the agenda. DOT is here, you know, tonight to present, you know, to council a proposal, a realignment of Route 72 in the area of, you know, Bracket Park. So currently, as everybody knows, on a, going a, you know, westbound on, from Riverside Avenue, 72 currently turns onto Main Street and then takes a right onto, you know, School Street. You know, the proposal, that's options, you know, being talked about, and it is important to, you know, stress that it's really, you know, the conceptual design phase. So this is where the DOT look at the, looks at the various, you know, options and presents to the community, quite frankly, in order to get feedback from the community that they can ultimately incorporate into a, you know, a project. I would also say that it's a time-consuming project, so nothing's going to necessarily happen, you know, you know, tomorrow, other than, you know, the design work. But the concept is to, instead of going, you know, east on, west on Riverside and taking a left onto Main Street to keep on going on Riverside, so the city portion of Riverside Avenue would become, you know, you know, a state Route 72, and then continue through a realignment to Bracket Park, and really a reconfiguration of, you know, Bracket Park. With that, the DOT is here, they, as, you know, they said they have several options, they like to go over with the community and really just start the dialogue process.
Thank you, Ray. While they're coming up, I just want to remind everybody, including Mr. Lotovico, that this is future plans, this is, this doesn't happen today, this might be a four to six-year plan. I had to just set the stage for you there.
Unfortunately, we're not the, the fastest when it comes to that, but we try to get a good quality product at the end of the day, and sometimes it just takes time. With that being said, my name's Andrew Creya, I'm a project manager with the Project Development Unit of the Connecticut Department of Transportation, the Highway Design Division. With me today is also Kevin McKernan, the project engineer as well. So to kind of go over how we got to this point, kind of want to do a little brief historical look at Route 72 and how we came here. This kind of zoomed-out picture shows the corridor as it comes down through downtown Bristol in itself, from when it turns right off of Memorial Boulevard to the east, and finally when it kind of zigzags its way back through on School Street, and then finally up towards Route 69, where Project 17, 187 is in construction at the moment. Previously, before COVID, around the year 2015, 2016, we were looking at realigning Memorial Boulevard and Riverside Avenue on the eastern end. We wanted to make the through movement, kind of push drivers to the right, more towards Route 72 than Memorial Boulevard. That would help lessen confusion between drivers and add more traffic to travel and point people to Route 72. During the original analysis and design, it came upon us that we also needed to do extra work along the Route 72 corridor as well, to ensure that more traffic being introduced or even just kind of turning cars onto Riverside Ave would not be detrimental for the corridor itself. The two other elements that would have to occur, one, what the city actually just received a well grant for, is the pretty much complete streets and pedestrian safety and mobility grant along Riverside Ave between Memorial Boulevard and pretty much when it meets up to School Street itself. They're working now with our local roads department to kind of work through the review process along with their consultant as well. And so the other part for this corridor as well is actually the realignment of Riverside Ave going towards Bracket Park. As it is now, it's a very confusing alignment, there's a lot of traffic that travels through those four different intersections as well, and we want to make sure that what we propose and what we look into provides a driver experience that's great for the downtown, as well as provide safety for pedestrians and non-motorized transit. So as Ray was kind of bringing up before, our alternatives that we looked at kind of looked at different locations and how to move traffic through this area. And what we came upon is that realigning actually Riverside Ave through Bracket Park ends up alleviating a lot of issues.
If you try hit escape, and then, then you'll get a... No, we're stuck. Either the arrow or escape might help you. For those watching on Zoom, we have the slide stuck, we'll get there. I don't know if you were.
Just to fill the moment of silence, and just to go back to a, even the, you know, St. Anne's, you know, concerns, so the specific concern that St. Anne's, you know, had, at least my understanding of it, is when we look at the various options, you know, some of the options, that section of School Street in front of St. Anne's would no longer be a, you know, street, but by same token, most of the, all the options, you know, really still maintain that area pavement. So I, you know, as the DOT will review the various options, I do believe that St. Anne's concern will ultimately be, you know, addressed.
And even in the short term here, the work on School Street has pretty much progressed all the way as far down as it's going to progress for the 7269 project that we're undergoing right now, correct?
Correct.
So those impacts are being felt now, John, and the traffic flow could be impacted on and off, but there's not going to be any construction up to St. Anne's for the next four to six years, right?
And I would say the proposed project that's being presented tonight also ties into the West End, so it doesn't necessarily require any, any work for the work that's currently being done.
Correct, good. So hopefully that answers your question, John, while we had a slight pause, and this is Option A, right?
Yep, so today I'm going to be presenting the three options that we came down from our multiple locations and original alternatives. These three were probably some of the best that we have for feasibility, as well as talking with the mayor and other public officials as well, it seems like these were, pretty much are good ones to progress moving forward. With all these alternatives, there's always going to be right-of-way impacts on and off state roads and as well into the park. So with this one here, it limits the park impacts to mainly go around the park as much as possible. As it is now with the new development coming off of School Street, I mean, off of Riverside Ave, a lot of new things have been developing, and new things have been going on since these plans were developed. I just want to remind everybody here, these are conceptual plans, they're not essentially construction plans. This is just in essence showing graphically what can feasibly be accomplished here without actually finding tune and getting through all the details. Some things may change, right-of-way lines may shift, parking lines may be added later, but this just gives a proof of concept to make sure that we can understand that this can actually work. So as it is right now, Alternative A leaves Bracket Park, and for the most part, intact. Now, the problem with that is when we keep the park intact and limit the impacts to it, we actually have to do full takes to a couple of buildings in the surrounding area. That would mean complete demolition and removal of them, just to get the intersections to work, and it ends up being a straighter shot pretty much into where the intersection of Route 69 is right now. The green shaded areas would be open land, which can be landscaped, turned into park access, or additional parks would be used by the town separately. As what we'd probably end up doing is some sort of right-of-way switch to go from a state-owned road to a town-owned road. At this point, too, this one leaves a little more access to the adjoining church next to Bracket Park, gives the one-way in, one-way out, and it gives us a little more opportunity to pretty much direct traffic flow through the area. So Alignment B kind of takes a more straight-ahead look. This gives more of a Boulevard kind of air, look through it. What happens is this ends up going straight through, it's a very simple alignment, leading up to a curve at the intersection of Route 69. This kind of alleviates some of our right-of-way impacts that'll be happening to the local buildings as well as local parking lots, but it will also impact Bracket Park a little more aggressively here. This gives us some area for linear projects for the future, for landscaping and sort of extensions to the parks themselves, but it also limits access to some of the appropriate parking and appropriate buildings in the nearby area.
Quick question on this one?
Sure.
Does this take the buildings that are, see, that, that one looks like it takes the buildings that are just before the intersection of 69?
Yeah, we take all, all, I think those are three different buildings.
Yep.
It would take all three of them.
In this first, in first and second?
First and second will take all three. The first one, Alternative A, also takes the building at the corner, yep, right there with that intersection as well. So that's a larger parcel take, as well as taking away a lot of parking spaces that are available now, as well as moving the roadway itself onto the existing culvert that runs underneath Bracket Park.
Thank you.
Yep. And Alternative C ended up being our preferred alternative for this area. This minimizes impacts to the park and properties and gives us a nice compromise between the two. As you can see with this, it impacts the park minimally compared to Alternative B, and also saves those three buildings off to the west, and Alternative A and B that were going to be removed, and it also saves the building on the intersection with Riverside Ave and North Main, which would have been removed with Alternative 1. With the impacts to the park here, we actually highlighted access to the church on the bottom due to previous conversations with past administrations. We were able to see that, you know, access to the church was a priority, and we wanted to keep that. This also leaves a lot of access to the adjacent buildings as well, and leaves a lot of room for park development, and also doing connectivity also to the downtown area as well. This is an example of a landscape concept plan. Again, these are all concepts, there's nothing set in stone, but these are some of the examples of things we actually do in previous projects for cities, especially when we're going to be impacting a park as well. Some of these could be an orchard setting, which is setting up rows of trees back and forth, active streetscapes, you could see those on a lot of bike paths that we put in, they usually have the little standalone bikes, or certain gym equipment that we can hang out. But it's also kind of setting up for, like, a real pedestrian movements in here. There is a basketball park, I mean, a basketball court within this park itself. This alternative has a road going right over it, but we will have enough area in the, in pretty much the mitigation area around this park that we can actually replace it in kind. And this is something that was put together by our landscaping unit, this is just landscaping examples, things that we've done in the past. It helps with route walking through the park, as well as connectivity from this park and from the park that will be immediately adjacent to the, on the eastern side with the new development coming in. It also helps with continuing the streetscape improvements on Riverside Ave that are in development now, along with street trees, larger sidewalks, looking at stamped concrete, and you're looking at pretty much of a more centralized downtown to bring it back into the park. And that's the last slide for this. Mainly wanted to bring this presentation here today to kind of show that we are reinvesting and kind of restarting this project as well. This is now going to be proposed project 17-10. We'll be reanalyzing it with new recurrent volumes, crash data, and all this new data that's coming around from a lot of the new developments that have been happening in Bristol around this area, and also around Memorial Boulevard. This is going to be almost a kickoff, there's going to be a lot of public involvement with this because we are dealing with the park, so we are going to have to do a lot of outreach. And this is more to make sure that what we presented today is feasible, is a way that we can progress forward with it, there's no red flags, big alarms going off in anyone's head that, you know, this can't be done, this can't be accomplished. As I was saying before, these are just concepts, and we want to fine-tune them a little bit. My group, the Project Development Unit, we like to put together concepts that we can hand off to our other design units themselves that will eventually turn into construction projects, but this is the first step. We're probably at about, you know, 5% design, but we want to look to move it up a little further before we can hand it off and keep everybody involved and up to date.
Great. First of all, Kevin, Andrew, sorry, and Kevin, for coming, want to thank you very much for coming, and just have to kind of let the public know as well that our $6.8 million capital investment fund grant, you guys have been great partners off the bat with us, and we appreciate it, because it's a state road, and we're taking care of the streetscape there, so that's how these conversations have come, so I do appreciate that. And the only other thing that you didn't talk about that I just want to highlight is that at the corner of Riverside and North Main, on that eastern section, for many people that may not know this, but that is now a... for many people, they may not know this, but that is now a considered our public square or kind of our park that we had worked with the state on. So, you know, we see some encroachments on that, but we might add park on the other side. So I wanted to make sure people knew that. I think in one of your pictures, it showed almost like a building would be there. So I didn't want people to think that those, any of those options, don't take out a building right now. Right now, it's an empty lot, but it will eventually become our public square. The other thing I love about the whole thing is you're looking at spaces that will connect many park areas throughout Route 72 and make this a really walkable downtown environment. So I just wanted to clarify that and thank you. And then I will open it up for questions from the council.
May I?
Cheryl.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. I want to just back it up a little bit before we get to that intersection and talk about the intersection prior and Route 72 coming in because it can backlog excessively. And especially that limited space from King Street to that intersection where you can turn up Blakesley, go on Riverside, or go straight on the Boulevard, that at peak time, you, there's no room, okay? And it backs up the intersection prior and then all the way really into Forestville. So I'm hoping when you look at this and you look at those traffic studies that this flow of traffic ultimately, if the timing of everything, really frees up that bottleneck because it comes from all angles and you can't navigate, you can't get to downtown for, it can take you quite a bit of time. So I just wanted to share that. I don't know if you've looked at how long cars sit at that end to answer the other end.
Yeah, I mean, we're aware of that. That was actually a previous project that predates this one, as well as the Route 69 improvements. The issue with it, we are aware of the bottlenecking, but to ensure that intersection actually works if we were to do improvements to it, we actually do need to improve the rest of Riverside first. So that's the streetscapes that are going in along the parallel route and then as well as the realignment through Bracket Park. Because if we just fix the intersection at Memorial Boulevard, it would actually push that congestion onto Riverside at other points.
One other thing that I've heard, and you probably are aware of this, but some of the backup on 72 extends and, and what also leads to trailers, tractor-trailer trucks getting off 72 and going on some of the side streets, such as Redstone Hill and on Burt Street and so forth, or Emmett Street, is that the lane to turn left onto 229 is short when you're coming off 72 to go up. And if that could be looked at, too, because that causes a bottleneck, but it also leads a lot of traffic onto some of those side roads to escape.
Okay, yeah, we could add that one to our list. Usually when we look at our traffic volumes for any given area, we actually expand the radius pretty wide to kind of catch everything so we get a bigger picture of what's going on.
But I'd be, yeah, I'd be happy to show you where I'm talking about. I'm not good with writing love sometimes when I talk, but I'd be glad to meet with you and show you. But these are some of the, I've experienced it, but a lot of people coming from my neighborhood, I live in the Forestville side of town, have shared with me some of the frustrations that they have. So, thank you.
And I know we're at the beginning of the process here, but I think it'd be great to have you come to our Transportation Committee as well, which Cheryl is the chairwoman of, so.
No, I'm not chair.
Oh, well, it's our liaison?
Liaison.
Yeah, liaison, sorry about that. So, but we do have an active Transportation Committee, which might be a way for you to get a lot of public input as we move forward. Any other comments or question from, anybody here? Go ahead, Sebastian.
So like you know, we do have a lengthy project happening similarly in the area. What would be the timetable for any of these three options hypothetically?
So any of these three options, due to the impacts that are going to be happening along the park and especially right-of-way impact, we're probably looking at a timeline between four to six years. We're more encroaching on six, depending on how much federal money is going to be involved in this. And that depends on our documentation on this side. But usually projects with this much impact, it's been around that timeline.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, I'll just thank both of you again, Andrew and Kevin, and we will continue to be in touch. Maybe my only other last question is typically, do you do a couple of community presentations like this so that you can get input from just more than the council? We appreciate you coming here first, but...
Yeah, usually with a project of this complexity, we like to keep the public involved as much as possible. So probably what we're going to be looking at is we're going to dive back into the engineering behind this and reanalyze a lot more information. Once we come to a consensus of our preferred alternatives, we'll end up meeting with you or another council meeting as well. And then from there, we'll pretty much do more of a formal public involvement meeting or public informational meeting. And then that's when we'll do a full presentation and take comments from pretty much anyone.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move back to our regular scheduled agenda items. And number two is the consent calendar. Oops, sorry, announcements. I crossed it off early, which I shouldn't have. So we have announcements first. Cheryl, I'll start with you. You're on my right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple of announcements. First of all, this Saturday is the Pine Lake Fishing Derby, and that's May 13th from 7:00 a.m. to noon. This is on Pine Lake, which is on Pine Street in the Forestville section of town. It's for children 12 and under, and it's a use of live bait only. While we're talking about Pine Lake, I would like to give a shout out to Troop 425 and particularly some of the Eagle Scout candidates that have done some cleanup at Pine Lake and are putting in three new picnic tables for the public to use. So I am waiting for pictures that I can post on my Facebook page, but thank you to Troop 425. On Saturday, May 20th, there will be a rabies clinic held at the Rockwell Pavilion from 9:00 a.m. to noon. That is again a Saturday. It's for dogs and cats. Dogs must be leashed and cats must be in a carrier. The cost is $20 per animal, and it is cash only. But it's a, that's an excellent price if you have an animal that needs to be, you know, have its shot. Dog licenses are coming due on July 1, and they do require a valid rabies shot certificate.
It's June 1.
Oh, June 1. Did I say July? Oh, yeah, June 1. I'm sorry about that. June 1, okay? On May 13th, again, that's this Saturday, at the library is hosting a Vietnam Vets and Family event. Please reach out to the library. It's at 1 o'clock if you'd like to attend to register. And staying in the theme of the libraries, the Mann Ross Library, which is one of our gems of Forestville, is having a plant swap and garden butterfly planting event on Saturday, the 20th, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. Bring your plants to swap, and there'll be gardening books available. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Eric, you're up next.
Yeah, I just have one. I just want to remind everybody the farmer's market. The season will begin on Saturday, June 17th. I know it's a little early, but everybody's been asking when it's opening. It'll be at 10:00 a.m. on June 17th. It will be held in the parking area or parking lot of Bristol Health Medical Care Center on Center Square each Saturday through October 14th. So one of my favorite things to do on a Saturday morning is go out there, so hope to see you guys there. Thanks.
Thanks, Eric. Sebastian?
Thank you, Mayor. I have three announcements here. A blood drive will be held in memory of Lieutenant Dustin Demonte and Sergeant Alex Hamzy on Friday, June 9th, from 8:00 to 4, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. in the parking lot across the street from the police station. Donations are by appointment, and you can go to www.ctblood.org/drives to book with the sponsor code C072. Walk-ins are welcome, but it is more convenient to make an appointment. It's recommended to make an appointment online today. Many of the spots were taken, probably more than half. So if you or anyone you know would like to donate blood, go to ctblood.org/drives. The CT Blood Center is the donor organization, so thank you for sponsoring this. And like I said, spots are filling fast, so be sure to get on there soon. In addition, the Barnes Nature Center is hosting Spring Fair next Saturday, May 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., free admission with guided walks and presentations of the center and food and drink by the Rotary Club and local artists and vendors as well, and a good chance to check out the Pigeon Hill property next door if you haven't. We had the opening for that not too long ago, so a good event there. And then additionally, we have the Culture Day at Bristol Central High School. That is May 17th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the cafeteria, and that is planned by members of the Youth Coalition, among some other students. May 17th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thanks, Sebastian. Susan?
In honor of entering into National Law Enforcement Memorial Week, all of my announcements this month are related to and surrounding our police department. Each year, hundreds of names of officers killed in the line of duty are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. These names are then read aloud during the annual candlelight vigil to memorialize those who made the ultimate sacrifice. Lieutenant Dustin Demonte and Sergeant Alex Hamzy will be read aloud at the candlelight vigil. 2023 will mark the 35th Annual Candlelight Vigil on Saturday, May 13th, at 7:45 p.m. on the National Mall, between Fourth and Seventh Streets and Madison and Jefferson Drives in Washington, D.C. Bristol Police Department officers will be attending this candlelight vigil, and it may also be livestreamed on two different links. You could go onto Facebook and look up the, it's called NLEOMF, which stands for the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund. Yesterday, members of our Bristol Police Department joined the Hartford Police Department on the Police Unity Tour. They will ride over 300 miles to Washington, D.C. to raise awareness about law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty and raise funds for the National Law Enforcement Memorial and Museum. Officers Michael Campisano, Officer Connor Hogan, and Detective Peter Dauphine are driving this journey in memory of Lieutenant Demonte and Sergeant Hamzy. Also, Sebastian mentioned the Bristol Police Department's hosting a blood drive again. That is on Friday, June 9th, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Also, on June 9th is the Law Enforcement Appreciation Night with the Bristol Blues. On Tuesday, June 13th, at 9:00, 9:00 o'clock in the morning, it's Coffee with a Cop at Starbucks at the original location, original? New one, new one, at 1450 Farmington Avenue. And finally, but not least, the Bristol Police Department is hiring entry-level officers. All you have to do is go online, and I believe applications are open for the written exam, which will be posted on May 17th and close on May 26th. So do not waste any time. Go on to our website and look at starting a career at one of the best police departments in our state.
The only thing I had is it's the best police department in the state. But Jackie, I'm going to read your announcements that she sent to me. Is that good? So Jackie has an announcement from the Water and Sewer Department. Hydrant hysteria competition is off to a great start. The team won their first local competition, and they're off to Toronto, Canada on June 12th. So we wish them luck. She would also like to extend a personal thank you to Chief Gould from the Police Department, Chief Hart from the Fire Department, Harley Graham from Bristol Emergency Management, and Christine LaPresse, who oversees EMS at the Bristol Hospital, for participating in the question-and-answer session that was held with disabled members of our community, in particular deaf, blind, or both, at last month's meeting for persons with disabilities. The entire meeting was informative to everyone in attendance. Finally, in the past, I mentioned a registry on the Police Department website for anybody with a disability, including individuals with service dogs. I would like to mention that this registry was developed by Officer Pierog, who is Frankie's handler, which is the newest addition to the department. At the meeting for persons with disabilities, Chief Hart informed us that the Fire Department also has a similar registry called Bristol Community Connect. If you know of anyone or come across anyone with a disability, please mention both registries, and the link for the Fire Department is on the Community Connect Bristol CT Spot. I think those are all the announcements from our council people. Andrew, do you have any?
Just a couple.
Okay.
I have a reminder with the end of school coming up that it's time to register your kids for kindergarten. Any child that's five years on or before January 1st, 2024, is eligible. You can find all the forms that you need on the Bristol Public Schools website. I encourage the families to register as soon as possible. As once fully registered, they'll be entered into the drawing to have a personal ride to school on the first day in a fire truck. Tomorrow evening is a kindergarten orientation at every school. Parents should have received their invitation for your child's new school if they're registered fully for kindergarten. You would get that notice. You catch up on the next meeting, which I believe the next one is next month for an orientation. Finally, the Bristol Earlyhood Childhood Alliance and School Readiness Council is having a family fun day on January 17th from 11:00 to 3:00 at Bristol Eastern High School. The activities are free for all families. There'll be a touch-a-truck, some local vendors, some fun activities for young children, food trucks, and more. Then from the Vets Council, Forestville's Post 209s shared with us that on May 15th at 3:00 p.m., they'll be showing the grand opening of the updates on Quinlan Park at May 15th at 3:00 p.m. So if you're available, come on down and come see all the hard work that they, Brian and all his guys have put into work, that Public Works have had stuff into it. 209 will also be celebrating their local veterans with their parade on Memorial Day on May 28th at 2:30 p.m. with a rain date of March, or of May 29th at 2:30 p.m., followed by a wreath ceremony in the Forestville, behind the Forestville Mann Ross Library. Bristol's Post 2 will be having their parade on May 29th, starting at 10:00 a.m. on Hope Street. The parade will then continue down towards School Street, left down the Boulevard to commence all of our opening ceremonies of the Boulevard Bridge, tied in with all the ending ceremonies at the Vets Council. While the roads are all closed, you can take a walk down. The new QR codes are in place at every monument. They have local veterans that have read things about each monument and each war and conflict that are sitting there now. We also have the Blue Star Memorial Garden that's now open and the new community garden. So there's a lot of things to do down Boulevard on Memorial Day. So we hope they'll all join us. That's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. One that Cheryl and I were just chatting about, I don't think you mentioned it, Andrew, because we were talking, but on May 15th at 3:00 p.m., there's going to be a grand opening ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new Quinlan Park. So I want to make sure we mention that well, and we're working towards the completion of the Memorial Boulevard Bridge, which we will have an official kind of ceremony for on Memorial Day. I have a couple of quick announcements just around the budget process. I want to make sure, I think Diane mentioned it in her overview today, that on May 15th, we will have the final budget adoption. We are, we have gone through a very long process over the last three or four months with department head reviews, with several budget hearings and lots of meetings, including the strategic improvement and capital improvement and Strategic Planning Commission. And we really have a budget that is pretty much a baseline budget, operating expenses that are, you know, zero-balanced and moving forward. Once we adopt that budget on May 15th, we will then move forward with our mill rate calculation to go ahead and meet that grand list and the requirements. So I just wanted to let people know that. And then the other reminder is that we have several programs for senior tax relief, including a volunteer tax relief program that the applications, I believe, are open until June 30th. Our Senior Homeowner Tax Relief Program, those applications will stay open until February 1st, 2024. The parameters have changed, so if you're over 65 and you have lived in your home for five years and your income is below $60,000 a year, you should go to the assessor's office and go ahead and apply for that program or maybe others. There are several programs to help seniors in particular through the homeowner tax situation that we have. I think those are all the announcements I have. Did we miss any? Anybody have any other announcements? All right, we're going to move on to number five, which is the consent calendar. And through Cheryl, we're going to do a request for Jackie to remove an item.
Right, Jackie has requested that we remove item 5G from the consent agenda.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm assuming that nobody else has anything else to remove from the consent calendar. So now I'll entertain a motion to approve A through F and H through J on the consent calendar.
Move approval.
Second.
Any last comments or questions on those items? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. Cheryl, can you bring two to the table?
Item G is to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents associated with an inland wetlands permit to pave the portion of Minor Street 490 feet west of Hill Street. And Jackie's specific question is, was this in the approved budget, and what will the cost be to move this, to pave this road?
This proposed project will be funded out of the city's road improvement fund, you know, can be funded through this year's, you know, current appropriation. Typically, the Department of Public Works has a outside vendor, you know, pave our roads. On this particular, you know, case, it's a very, you know, small road. This is the section, unaccepted section of Minor Street off of, immediately adjacent to, you know, Rich's, you know, farms. The cost would be approximately $14,000, the work we perform by our own staff, mainly because there's roadway grading associated with it. It does, the work does require a permit from our local inland wetlands commission, which is a specific action being requested, you know, tonight. But I would say the real reason why we're doing it is because there is a grade. Currently, the road is gravel. It's public, it's the Board of Public Works' policy not to enhance unaccepted, you know, city streets to maintain the same level, you know, of service. That's our intent. The reason why we're moving forward or requesting to pave this section of minor road is because it continually gets washed out in heavy rains and is really a burden on the department from a maintenance perspective. So the width of the road, wouldn't it be a full road? We're not planning to, you know, widen or reconfigure the road. It's, you know, it will be paved at approximately 16 feet, you know, wide, once again, with our own forces.
Great, thanks. All right, so let me entertain a motion here to go ahead and approve G.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Jackie, you can give me a high sign if that answered your question. So $14,000, yeah. Unfortunately, I think over time may save us money from all the extra repair work that we have to do to provide services like trash and other things that our trucks are going on, right, Ray?
Yep.
Good, good. Any other comments or questions from anybody? All right, we will take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, we, thank you much, Ray. We will go on to number six, which is reports and committee reports. And our first one is 6A, which comes from Salary Committee.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, we're the first four. So item A is to approve the hiring of four temporary laborers for 40 hours per week in the Department of Water and Sewer for the 2023 summer season. And this basically is what it says. There will be four temporary laborers. They could be college students or someone recently out of high school that comes in, works with our seasoned staff, doing some of the work, the more menial kind of tasks that frees up the experienced and trained staff to do some other projects during the summer. The hourly rate will be $15.40. They will work under supervision of our staff, and it's a great opportunity not only to have this assistance in the busy months where the regular staff can focus on some projects that have to be done in the, in the summer months, but it also is coming out of their current operating fund, and will be no increase in, in expense. So I would like a motion to have this approved.
Great.
Or I moved it?
I'll take that as a motion.
Thank you.
That sounds good. You are moving it through.
Second.
Great, any comments or questions from anybody? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. We'll go to B.
Yes, item B, I'd like to move to approve the memorandum of agreement between the city and AFSCME Local 233 to hire up to 10 per diem dispatchers and to forward to the Board of Finance for informational purposes. Little history here is...
Let me get a second first, then.
Oh, thank you.
Second motion. All right, go ahead.
Okay, we had quite a lengthy talk on this, and this actually, over time, can save the city money, but also have a pool of qualified, trained, per diem substitutes to work in our dispatch operations. Right now, if we pay one of our regular dispatchers, over time, it's $48.28 per hour. The contractual rate that we're looking to bring in these per diem is at 2911. So this is substantial savings. The, if a shift becomes open, it will first be offered to the regular staff, okay? And if that's not possible, it'll be then go to this pool of trained individuals. Now, I'll say that, we looked at this, and we talked about this quite a bit. It probably ate up the most of our meeting. When we're saying 10, we're, it's probably going to be a combination of 10 people that, I mean, five people that might not have training before and therefore have to go through a mandatory 256 hours of training. But we're also hoping that we'll have some seasoned retired individuals that are already trained in the protocol of dispatch operations that won't require that upfront investment. Either way, it does pay for itself over time, once we have those dedicated, trained staff. This also gives us the opportunity to have a pool of candidates ready, should we have a full-time opening, because then we can go to our per diem staff to see if somebody wants to come on full-time, is trained, and is of a known capacity. So we look at this both as a benefit to give relief to our dispatch team, which works very hard, but also saves us money in the long run by having this covered instead of overtime. So with that, I have made the motion, and we have a second.
Yeah, we have a second.
Ask for any other questions.
Yeah, we'll see if there's any other question. Maybe my first question, if you don't mind, too, is, I assume, too, we're having a little bit of a struggle with our current staffing levels, or is this more just a long-term look?
I think it's something that's been talked about for a while. I mean, you can run into burnout. I know the chief is here, and maybe he wants to answer some of those, but it's to alleviate the burnout of our existing staff, mostly from what I understand.
Yeah, they're getting held over.
That's, that's 100% accurate. So as it stands now, if they're not able to fill that shift, they're held over, which is creating a lot of burnout in there, and this will allow it to bring in other people to cover that, which, when we do that, that'll be at a cost savings. Regardless, someone's going to be in there working. So if we're holding them over, we're paying them at the time and a half of that rate at the disadvantage of having them work extra hours that they're putting in versus bringing in somebody else. So it's going to be a great plan overall.
Great, thanks. Any other questions or comments?
A comment through the chair. I think one of the, besides saving some money and besides getting a pool of candidates to cover, you know, like maybe a couple of weeks that somebody's going to be out or vacation time, I think the biggest thing is a morale boost. And I think that a dispatcher, knowing that they can put in for vacation time and probably get it covered, and I would probably have to say that I would be willing to bet that out of the up to 10 per diem, I'll bet you more than, more than half are going to actually be already trained dispatchers. I know that there's a huge desire for dispatchers that I know, working in other towns, to put in for these part-time and per diem positions.
That's 100% accurate. We're already getting inquiries. There's a lot of people that are retired law enforcement or retired dispatchers that are per diem in many different jurisdictions, so they're going to be jumping on board, too. So, you know, to grab shifts, so.
So it sounds like it's a win-win all the way across the board.
Mm-hmm.
Great, other comments or questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Motion carries. And another salary, 3C.
Yes, on letter C, I would like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the city and AFSCME Local 233 to upgrade positions in the bargaining unit as presented and to move forward to the Board of Finance for funding purposes. There are...
Second first?
Yes, thank you.
Very anxious time. There we go, we have a second now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, there's a few positions that are currently in the 4A. They're, you know, outside of a custodian, they're rarely clerical, you know, there's a bookkeeping clerk, a secretary, and so forth. But a lot of these positions are also have, like, partners in Salary Group A, okay? So it's bringing alignment to the contract. The differential is not that significant. I'm trying to recall, I didn't have in my notes how many staff. I'm looking at Mark Penny, who's sitting over there, are currently in the 4A. But it's really bringing an alignment to the positions so that if you're a clerk, you're a clerk; if you're administrative, you're administrative, and eliminating 4A and bringing those up. The only, and the same, there's also a custodian maintenance in category five, and so bringing the alignment, basically.
Realigning. Questions or comments on this one? All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Was there something typed there? Did I miss? No, okay, we're good. And last one from Salary Committee, 6D, by the way.
Okay, 6D. I would like to move to accept, oops, I'm reading the wrong thing, 6D. Make a motion to approve a part-time position of accounting clerk, accounts receivable, AFSCME Local 233, salary code 5, effective July 1, 2023, and to refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes. Basically...
Hang on, we're going to do a second.
Oh, gee.
Here we go, go ahead.
If there was an item E, I swear I'd get it right now.
You got it. Sebastian has a second, now you can explain it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I noticed Diane Walden did drop, jumped back on, but basically, this position is to make a part-time position for 18.75 hours per week at salary code 5, which we just talked about, by the way. And this will come out of, the special revenue fund for police private duty. We have a lot of billings that go out for the private duty. It's staff, it's a vehicle, and there's overhead. So the cost to fund this position will come out of that fund. It's just the volume that is happening right now, as our police officers, you know, are having multiple jobs, and it's the prime time of year for construction, that it really needs an eagle eye and a lot of attention to detail to make sure we capture all the dollars, that they're billed timely and the collections come in. Even when this slows down in other parts of the year, they could be working in other functions, there's always budgeting and so forth, but the private duty never goes away. So this really takes that burden off the current staff, and we're anticipating this activity might increase more, and it just made sense for the Comptroller's Office to have this, this help. And so Diane, I see you're on, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think you covered it very well, Cheryl. The only thing I would add, just to kind of put things in perspective, would be that the private duty billings have increased from less than $1 million in 2015 to over $2.3 million in 2021. So the volume has significantly increased, and this, having a part-time position to stay on top of this will be very helpful for the staff. So thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Very good context, thank you. Other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. Now we move on to two from Real Estate. That's you, Sue.
Okay, first up, just a little bit of background, the Real Estate Committee was approached by family members of longtime Marconi Avenue residents to purchase the four small lots of city-owned property that we've had, you know, that we, we've actually owned. We have been approached in the past, but none of that worked out. This is actually a really heart-touching family story behind their request and their desire to own these four parcels because of the long-term family connection to Marconi Avenue. So with that said, I make a motion, I hereby move that the City of Bristol accept the offer from Jacqueline Polence and Elaine Myhill and/or their assigns in the amount of $6,000 for city-owned property identified as Assessor's Map 12, Lots 9, 10, 11, and 12, Marconi Avenue. I further move that, in this matter, be referred to the Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
Great, and just a point of clarification, I thought I heard you say Assessor's Map 12? It's listed as 13 here?
No.
It is 12, good.
It was a correction, I'm sorry.
Very good, so you got it right, that's great. It wasn't right here, so, right on?
So one thing I got right today.
No, you got a lot right, I'm sure. So those are first and our second, and any comments or questions here? Pretty straightforward. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, you are on to F.
Okay, next item, again, this year, we have received a request for a city-owned parcel down in Forestville to be used as a staging area for the Memorial Day Parade. So I hereby move to grant to Forestville American Legion Post 209 the use of city-owned property known as 43 East Main Street, Map 41, Lot 8-1, AKA the Loretty property, from May 27, 2023, through May 29, 2023, for a staging area for their Memorial Day Parade. I further move that the matter be referred to Corporation Council's office for insurance compliance. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, pretty straightforward, we do this every year, actually. Any questions or comments?
And I believe that they already have their insurance compliance on record.
Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All righty, Ordinance Committee is next. G.
First one up, we have three this evening where we're going to be voting on to adopt amendments for new ordinances. First one up, I hereby move that Section 2-23, removal and sanctions of public officials of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, is hereby amended to read as follows. I further move that the city clerk publish said amendments in additions to the Code of Ordnances, and that they become effective upon the expiration of 14 days from the date of their publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the City of Bristol.
Second.
Great, any comments that you'd like to make about this one, Sue?
This, a little background on this, this is what our, this, we were mandated on the ballot last November to create an ordinance to put into some safeguards to address any removal or sanctions of public elected or appointed officials. We did spend quite a few months trying to make sure that we got this absolutely the best we could. And kind of the summary of it, I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything else.
I mean, the only other one that I do want to point out is that eventually this would get to a three-quarters vote of the entire City Council to remove somebody with the action, and the City Council is not responsible, correct, for kind of the adjudication of this? This comes to the City Council, they're not setting up their own, you know, meetings or executive sessions to identify issues.
Through the chair, I just want to add, this also affects appointees, not just elected officials, and that was something that was important to the voters, as well as to all of us on ordinance.
Great, I think we've covered it well. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? That motion carries. We are on to H, correct? Yes.
Okay, so this one... Okay. This one, I hereby move that Section 23-1, Adoption, Formation, and Powers of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, is hereby amended to read as follows. I further move that the city clerk publish said amendments in additions to the Code of Ordnances, and that they become effective upon the expiration of 14 days from the date of their publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the City of Bristol.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Sue, give us a quick overview of this one, if you would, or? This is just...
This one, if I, can somebody help me out here?
This was the powers, you know, to, this was when we, who had powers to.
Issue citations.
And issue citations, and expanding who could, you know, the breadth of, you know, who had that ability.
Great. Any other comments or questions?
And this one pertains specifically to the Bristol Water Pollution Control Assistant Chief Operator, and this was all the Water Department?
Yep.
Correct.
Yeah, the fats, oils, and grease, the FOG ordinances?
That's next.
That is next.
FOGs is next.
But this was within the Water Department as far as who could issue citations. This kind of clarified and expanded upon that.
Gotcha. Are there any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. And now we move on to the last ordinance.
The third one does reference FOG, fats, oils, and grease. And so with this one. Okay. I hereby move that Section 22-85, Legal Proceedings of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, is hereby amended to read as follows. I further move that the city clerk publish said amendments and additions to the Code of Ordinances and that they become effective upon the expiration of 14 days from the date of their publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the City of Bristol. This one does pertain to water and sewer, and it is for fats, oils, and greases. We have always had some reference in our ordinances about inspections and stuff. I think our, our, the department just hasn't really had a good ground to take enforcement action, and this now kind of expands upon that and really clarifies that and gives them specific power in following up. Prior to this, it's kind of been mostly education and working with businesses, and again, as we talk about with code enforcement, we just need the ability to issue citations, and now this clearly defines who can and how it's done so that we can gain compliance.
Great. We need a second, I think, or did we?
I thought I heard a second, but just in case, second.
Second.
Good. Anything to add, Cheryl?
No, it's just that, you know, a lot of your larger retail places are good with compliance with FOGs. This gives the ability for them to maybe work with some of the smaller places to make sure that that material's being disposed of correctly, so it doesn't clog our sewer lines and cause additional problems elsewhere.
Great. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. All right, let's go right back around the horn to see if there are any reports with this, and Cheryl.
Start with here. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. From the City Arts and Culture Commission, and I keep bringing this up because this is going to be a fabulous event, we're doing our first cultural district festival, and this coincides with museum weekend, so where there's passes to get into the museums. But on Federal Hill from 12 to 3, we're going to have artists displaying their wares, and these wares will be available for purchase. We're going to have food trucks, we're going to have music. So it's going to be celebrating our cultural district. Several of the businesses that fall into the cultural district map will be having specials and inviting people in to see what they do in their businesses. So please keep Saturday, June 10 on your calendar. You're not going to want to miss it. This is the first of many to come. Another committee I serve on is Public Works. I just like to keep saying this, that City Hall continues to be on time and under budget, which is great. One of the things we're looking at in committee is we're looking at changes for some of the fees that are at the transfer station. We're specifically looking at commercial because we've been looking at some of the history, and a graph shows some of the unusual volumes that come in on a commercial. We want to make sure that the homeowner and the resident is not taking the burden from somebody who might be disposing of improperly. So as a committee, we're looking at this and coming back to the next meeting with more comments and so forth. And those are two things I just wanted to share out of committee. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And Eric, with your first Board of Education lead time report.
This is from Board of Education. The Board of Education, working with the mayor's office and everyone else, were able to reduce their budget by over $900,000, which is a great savings. So that was, that was great there. Also, I'd like to say that Best Community for Music Education, we've got the award here in Bristol eight years in a row. The YES Academy Student Presentations, there was a lot of awards given out, the CAE student awards and the Staff Achievement Awards. Just seeing all the awards was really good. And I just want to say congratulations to all those people. There was a long list, and we'd be here all night if I said them all, but just to recap, there was a lot of, a lot of good awards.
Excellent. Very good. And just also, while you're on the Board of Ed, I'll mention that some very successful programs at the Board of Ed this past weekend, too, at BAMEs, that were driven by the Board of Ed, they will continue to do programs. And in the future, we will actually, I hope I'm not stealing Andrew's thunder, but we will be scheduling through Parks and Rec more community-based activities. So things are really starting to kick off at BAMEs, which is a great economic driver downtown, too. So love that. Sebastian?
No new reports on it.
And Sue, do you have any reports from any other committees?
Code enforcement.
Great.
Very busy, active month. So for April, we had 41 complaints come in to code. They deemed 36 of those to be valid complaints. That was up from February had 10 complaints and March had 19. Out of all of that, year-to-date, by the end of April, we have, there's been $1,944 in paid citations. That does not account for how many citations were issued, because again, if people, if somebody gets a citation, the whole point is for them to contact the building department and to be able to resolve whatever issues are and gain compliance. But we have received the 1,944 to date so far this year. Out of the 41 complaints also, we had 34 violation letters that were sent out in the month of April, four citations, we had three condemned properties, 16 nuisance properties. So they're very busy. A lot is going on. I think that a lot of the properties are resolving and, you know, getting up to a standard that we, we need them to be here in our city. Code enforcement is working overtime, and we are also exploring possibly expanding our code enforcement a little bit, maybe with an extra person or half a person, or that's, that's something that we're discussing now. Right now, our head building official, Rick Brown, spends about 75% of his time only on code enforcement. That just shows you how much there is going on and what a positive outcome there is and, you know, how important it is to our city of Bristol.
Great, thanks. I'll come back to you. Jackie, I didn't get any reports from you written, so I'm assuming you're okay. Anything to report? If not, you can, you can type in the chat. We'll go to Andrew next. Andrew, do you have any committee reports?
Yeah, I'm there in Connecticut. I will say, myself, Cheryl, and Eric attended the BAMEs program with the Bristol Corral, and there was a little bit of a jazz ensemble. The place was filled, packed to the brim. So everybody that is involved in that, kudos, you put on a great event, and I personally cannot wait for more to come.
Great, thanks, Andrew. And Jackie, I turned over the page and found your committee report. So this is Jackie's committee report. The Water and Sewer Department is in process of mailing yellow postcards to customers to sign up for water meter change. There is no charge for a new meter. Customers can schedule their appointment online at any time. You can also call the meter shop office to schedule an appointment. The phone, the phone number and the hours are noted on the postcard. This is a little bit of a change in how they're doing it. They're trying to be more flexible to get more people to sign up for this. So thank you, Jackie. And Cheryl's got another one, and I think Eric's got another one. We'll do Cheryl first.
You know, we were just talking about BAMEs, and I don't know, I don't think we had this person on staff at our last meeting, but I did want to share that we have hired our new theater person for, if that will work in the Parks and Recreation, and that's Ariana Terrio, okay? And that's how you say it, I'm French, no, I'm not French, but I have a French name, so it's Terrio. And she joined us, she's formerly with ESPN. She comes with a lot of media background and so forth, so we're real excited to have her because, you know, this is what we want to do. We've heard BAMEs mentioned several times, and so she'll be coordinating and working on the city side to get publicity out about the shows that are there so that we can showcase the Rockwell Theater. So welcome, Ariana, to Bristol.
Thank you, Cheryl. And Eric?
And just a quick one from the Youth Commission. The Youth Recognition Awards will be held tomorrow night at Muzzy at 6:00.
All right. Thanks. Good. I think we covered them all? Everybody good? All right, we will move on to old business. Does anybody have any old business? Not aware of any. How about new business? Not hearing any new businesses. Can you read the resignations for us?
Absolutely. Jeffrey Hayden was a Section 2-9 resignation from the Planning Commission. David Scarrett was a Section 2-9 resignation from the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agency of the Conservation Commission. Karen Hints resigned from the Energy Commission. Leah Zukoskis resigned from the School Readiness Council. And Ashley Versalles resigned from the Library Board of Directors.
Great.
Through the chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignations, put them on file, and also send a letter to each individual thanking them for their service.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, we move on to number 10, which is appointments. We'll start with inland wetlands. So we have two reappointments, and we'll do those together. We're going to reappoint Zachary Fisk to a term that expires in 5/2026, and also reappoint Michael Robinson to that same term that expires in 5/2026. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We'll give you the second, Cheryl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Motion carries. Next, within inland wetlands, we had a resignation, so we are going to appoint James Ritchie, who is an alternate to replace David Scarrett, who resigned as a regular member. I have that term to expire in 5/25.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. On the Planning Commission, we also would like to appoint Chris Hayden, who is currently an alternate to replace, it's not Jeffrey Hayden, it's a.
Chris Nardi.
Chris Nardi replaces, yeah, Jeff Hayden, sorry about that. So let me reread it. Appoint Chris Nardi, who is currently an alternate, to replace Jeffrey Hayden, who is a regular member, and that term is set to expire in 7/27.
Move approval?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thanks. You are catching up here, too, Jackie, you're getting good on there. Thank you. Nobody opposed, so motion carries. On the Retirement Board, we would like to reappoint Thomas DiNoto to a term that will expire in 5/28/28.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Fair Rant Commission is coming up. We have a conflict on this one, so I'll ask that you have to remove yourself from the discussion then, if you have a conflict?
For the whole list, or just? Are you going?
How do we do that? One at a time, and then we can do it. Okay, so first, I'll entertain a motion to appoint John Fitzgerald, who will be a regular member representing homeowners with a term to expire on 5/2026.
Move approval?
Sure.
And we'll give Sue the second on that one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Motion carries. The next one is to appoint Tim Gamache as a regular member. He is representing tenants, and that term will expire on 5/2026 as well.
So move.
Second.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, and I think the next one is one that you'd like to abstain from on the list. So I'm going to have to ask you to remove yourself from the room, correct? Is that how we do this?
Or I can just abstain?
No, but you, you just go out there for one minute, and we'll get you back in. All right, I'll entertain the motion to appoint David Haberfield as a regular member representing landlords with a term to expire on 5/2026.
Move approval? Second.
Cheryl has the second. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. You can go get her, we'll come back in. Wait one second. That was a quick one. All right, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Adam Brothwell as a regular member representing homeowners with a term to expire on 5/2025.
Move approval?
Second.
Any comments on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We have the appointment of Christina Costa as a regular member. She's representing tenants with a term to expire on 5/24.
So move.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Appoint Brian Brown as a regular member. He's representing landlords with a term to expire on 5/2025.
Move approval?
Second.
Any comments or questions on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And then we are going to appoint Sue Pazansky as a regular member representing homeowners with a term to expire on 5/24.
Move approval?
Second.
Any comments or questions on that one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We have one alternate, just for clarification, we have three total alternates. We wanted to get this commission kind of up and running so that they can have a formation meeting, so we have a little bit more work to do, but we have completed enough people to do this. So we just have one more, and we're going to appoint Brian Brady as an alternate member. He will be representing the homeowners as an alternate with a term to expire on 5/2026.
So move.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all very much. By the way, this was a unbelievable puzzle piece, so thank you to the Ordinance Committee for making sure that this is so well-balanced. But we had a balance, homeowners, tenants, landlords, also with party affiliation, and came together pretty much last minute today, which is great. So we have two more that we need, by the way. We need a tenant as an alternate, and we also need a landlord as an alternate. So I know we've been putting that call out for the last month or two, I think.
Couple months, right.
So if anybody is interested, please check in with us. All right, I got more to do here. Not many, though. School readiness, we are going to appoint Michelle Fanguilo as a representative from the local providers. This is included in the state funding grant to replace Leah Zukoskis. There's no term to this. I think I did pretty good with those names.
Move approval?
They were tough.
Second.
Really close.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And the final one, he's been waiting a long time, too. Is he still here? Yep. We are going to reappoint Rob Longo as the superintendent of the Water and Sewer Department, term to expire on 5/2027.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments on this one? Jackie's approving over there, which is great. Thank you, well, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Rob, for sticking in, too. I appreciate it, doing a great job. All right, I don't have any others. Did I miss any?
No, you did not.
Wow, very good. Always looking for people, by the way, so we continue to move these things. Board of Finance will be in June. By the way, June is an extremely busy month because many of our boards and commissions have June appointments. So those out in the community that are interested, I highly recommend that you get in touch with the mayor's office, and we'll have even busier, I think, assignments next month. All right, we're going to, we already did number 11, so we're going to skip over to number 12, which is to approve the installation of a marker at the property known as Torrey's Den and authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any necessary documents on this. I'm going to be forthright with this one. I think there was a push from somebody that they wanted to table this because they, the, one of the Daughters of the American Revolution representatives could not come and talk to us about this this week. I will be open to the committee on this. We have a long write-up on this. This is a very cool, kind of historical landmark and great history behind it. I personally don't see the need to table it, but I did want to throw that out there. So I will entertain a motion to either table or to approve.
Do they want us to table it?
We did get asked to, so that she can go ahead and present to us.
Then I make a motion that we table it, because I'd love to hear them come and talk about this.
That's fine. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yep, good. Not much discussion on this. It's going to be yes or no. Do you, who, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we'll bring that one to next month. Number 13.
I have to leave a room.
Oh, you have another. That's fine, I will let you do that, and then we'll move it forward. All right, can I have somebody read the motion on here? There's a resolution as well, so this one's a little bit longer. You guys have it in the second page?
You want me to?
Yeah, go ahead.
"Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the 2023-2024 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant, as approved by the Economic and Community Development Board on May 4, 2023, is hereby approved with a U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD allocation in the amount of $588,210, and that the mayor or acting mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents relating to this grant, including final agreements, and to submit all required documents to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for its approval and allocations of funds. Be it further resolved that the Year 49 CDBG Annual Action Plan be referred to the Board of Finance for action regarding the appropriation of funds subject to final approval of the annual action plan by HUD."
Yep, and then there's a listing of all the different organizations that'll be getting the money that add up to what we have.
A grand total of $643,210.
Perfect, and that's in there.
Thank you.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Ledger, you sat here through this. Would you like to make any comments? I will just say that coming through ECD and the group, they did a wonderful job working through this, so you hung in here, so you might as well get a chance to brag a little bit.
It's always my pleasure to be here. I'm just here if anybody has any questions.
Great. Are there any questions?
The reason that the number on the bottom is different from the number on the top is that we receive some income from properties that are sold or refinanced, and the difference is added into next year's total. And also, some funds are reprogrammed if they aren't expended, so that's why the number on the bottom doesn't match the allocation from HUD, just in case you noticed that that didn't match.
Great.
Through the chair, I would just like to also recognize the work that Dr. Ledger does. She puts a lot of effort into this, and it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Very smooth process this year, I'll add as well. Great. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Wait, is it a resolution?
Oh.
Oh, is it? No?
This is a, that's true. It's a roll call vote as a resolution. Good catch, Cheryl.
Okay. Mayor?
Yes, oh, she started with me this time.
Councilman Howe?
Yes.
Councilwoman Olson?
That's a yes.
Councilman Panniotto?
Yes.
Councilman Rosengren?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thibault?
Yes.
And Tyler is recused.
Great. Can you get her for me? Thank you. All right, we're on to number 14, which is the approval, oops, hang on, I've got to go back to it, of the Contract 2P23-064 Dial-A-Ride Transportation Services with Human Resource Agencies of New Britain at a cost per ride of $17.70.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Contract 2P23-064 Dial-A-Ride Transportation Services with Human Resource Agency of New Britain Incorporated at a per-ride cost of $17.70, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to acknowledge said assignment.
Second.
Great. Any comments or questions on this one? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? That motion carries. Number 15 is to award the Contract 2C23-059 Rehabilitation of the Bridge at 04488 Mellon Street over the Poughkeepsie River to Arborio Corporation.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to award Contract 2C23-059 Rehabilitation of Bridge 04488 Mellon Street over Poughkeepsie River to Arborio Corporation in the amount of $2,163,038, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate said contract.
Second.
Questions or comments on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. We are on to 16, correct? Yep. To approve the extension of the Contract of 2P22-051B Professional Architectural Engineering Services with Quisenberry, Arkery, and Malik relative to the construction of the new northeast middle school. Cheryl, I think there's a...
Oh, I thought Eric was...
Eric, why don't you go ahead and read it? Are you there?
Where is this?
The results.
Okay, I want to make a motion to extend the current architectural contract with Quisenberry, Arkery, and Malik for Phase 2 of Contract 2P22-051B Professional Architecture and Engineering Services related to the construction of the new northeast middle school in the amount of $3,608,000, no dollars, okay, no sense, and to send to City Council for approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments on this one? It's a little weird that we're sending it to City Council, because we are the City Council for approval. So just the Board of Finance, yes.
Okay.
So we will amend that to be the Board of Finance. Are you good with that? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. All right, we move on to number 17, which is the approval of the change orders for Damato Downs Joint Venture by the Memorial Boulevard Inter-District Arts Magnet School Committee and to take any action as necessary.
Oops. I tabbed down.
You got it, Cheryl?
I do, I was just scrolling down too far. I make a motion to approve the change orders for Damato Downs, a joint venture totaling $39,550.55, as recommended by the Chair of the Memorial Boulevard Inter-District Arts Magnet School Committee, and to take any action as necessary.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Sebastian has a second. Any comments or questions on this one? I think this will probably be one of our last change orders for that building. I don't know if anybody...
I hope so.
Nobody to answer.
Cross your fingers.
Yeah. Well, the building is beautiful. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. And we are on to 18, which is our last regular debated item. So can somebody do that one for me? It's a SCADA system, which we talked about in the joint meeting.
Yeah, okay. Be it resolved, or make a motion to, well, resolve that the agreement between the Water Department and the City of Bristol pertaining to the payment of debt service and financing cause, is this what I'm, no, that's not what I want to read, is it? Is that the motion?
I think you're right.
Yeah, okay. All right. Sorry about that, folks. Through a motion, be it resolved that the...
It's down further.
Oh.
It is further.
It is further, I thought it was.
All the way at the bottom, scroll all the way down.
Sorry about that. Way down. Oh. Can we waive the, okay. How about we make a motion, since we've already done this? Could I make a motion to waive the reading of the resolution?
You can.
I hereby make a motion to waive the resolution of the reading.
Yeah, and Andrew seconded it, I heard him. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries, and this is so long, I'm so glad that you waived it.
Thank you.
So now we'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Roll call.
We need the motion.
Oh, I need, I make a motion to approve the resolution appropriating $5,200,000 for the upgrade of the Water Department's SCADA system.
Great, and a second?
Second.
Now we'll do a roll call vote.
Thank you.
Last roll call vote of the night.
It is.
Mayor?
Yes.
Councilman Howe?
Yes.
Councilwoman Olson? You can just nod.
Yep, she said yes in there.
Councilman Panniotto?
Yes.
Councilman Rosengren?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thibault?
Yes.